Zoning Board of Adjustment Meeting, Monday, September 23rd, 2019. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open, adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Star Ledger and the Tred Town News. Second, on January 15th, 2019, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on January 15th, 2019, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits which are on your right at the front and rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcast on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum must be appropriate to a judicial hearing, and it must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Here.
Mr. Mertens?
Here.
Mr. Moretti?
Here.
Mr. O'Donnell has been excused. Mr. Orozco?
Here.
Mr. Seiya?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Loflin?
Here.
And Chairman Nansen?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance, please?
(Inaudible) allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every reason and justice for all.
Thank you.
Mr. Tropoli, you might swear it in the professionals, please. Thank you, sir. Approval of minutes?
There's no minutes this evening.
Vouchers?
I do have one voucher for Mr. Tropoli. I'll pick him around.
Okay. We'll pass it and we'll vote on it at the end of the meeting, please. Correspondents?
Yes, I have a letter from Sean Connolly. His application is on the agenda for this evening. They're in the process of securing the easements for their property, and they're working on being able to secure an LOI from the DEP. He has asked that the board carry his application from September 23rd to December 16th, 2019, with no further notice, and he granted the board an extension of time to act on the application through January 31st, 2020.
Okay. Anyone in the audience for case number 1804? Sean and Christina Connolly? This case will be carried to December 16th, 7:30, with no further notice. Any other correspondence?
That's the only correspondence I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Resolutions. Case number BA 1908-1022, Medea LLC. Resolution granting approval to construct a residential dwelling on an undersized lot. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Seiya, Loflin. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Hughes.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Seiya. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
And Mr. Loflin?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Case number BA 19-10, Mariva...
Kordorowska.
Kordorowska. Resolution granting variance to construct a residential...swelling?
It should be dwelling.
Dwelling. Dwelling on existing undersized lot. Eligible voters: Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, Orozco, Seiya, Cantor, Nansen. Can I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Mertens.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Orozco. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Merton?
Yes.
Mr. Moretti?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen?
Yes.
Motion carries resolutions memorialized.
Thank you. Application before the board, case number BA 1802, Robert and Dolores Kowalski. This is a use variance application. Robert and Dolores Kowalski, as applicant owners seeking a use variance with the bulk variance to continue to use the property for a roofing business which has been in use on the property since 1991. Interior storage materials in one residential home premises known as Block 229, Lot 6, 26 McGill Road. I'm not going to go through all of the dates that this was scheduled for testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will be stepping down at this time and turning this portion of the meeting over to Mr. Miller. Step up, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I also will be...
Okay, well, y'all go have a cup of coffee.
Okay.
And then we'll be back. Just for the record, would you please place your name on the record, please?
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Chairman. John Miller, Weiner local.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I believe we're here for the vote, that all the testimony had been concluded at the previous hearing date, and there were a number of members that had to qualify by reviewing the videos, and I understand there's a review note here that they have. So unless any member has any questions of me, I think we're just ready for your vote.
Yes, Mr. Loflin, Mr. Cantor, Mr. Seiya, and Chairman Nansen will all certify, so everybody is eligible to vote on this application.
Okay. Mr. Miller, do you have any advice for the board, or...
Just a reminder for the board that this is a use variance application, or a useful or unusual, in order for the application to be approved, it would have to be five affirmative votes for the board in order for the applicant to be granted approval.
Okay. Jennifer, any further? Charlie?
No, sir. I think all the testimony was provided to the board at their last meeting, and as I said, I took no exception to the testimony that had been provided, and now I put it back into your lap for a vote.
Okay. Charlie?
Yeah, just, you know, at the last meeting, there was some discussion with a bunch of the buffers. We made a recommendation, and Matt had agreed with it, that all the buffers be not dedicated as conservation easements, so there's no issues with that, so just wanted to summarize that for the board.
Okay. Let's pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Jen, I might need some help here, so... All right, so what we have here is a six-plus, regular-sized, acre lot, and the applicant's looking for a D1 variance. There's two uses: roofing and a single-family. And based on all the testimony, you know, provided that the applicant is going to maintain the fire and the safety that we put on the record, remove the bamboo, the only thing that, and what Charlie mentioned, we're not going to call the buffer zones conservation easements. We're removing that. I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, sir.
Okay. I have a motion by Mr. Seiya. Do I have a second?
I'd like to second that, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Hughes. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, you may. Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Orozco?
Yes.
Mr. Seiya?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Loflin?
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Eileen, my vote was no in the beginning with this, due to one fact: farmland buffer. However, I just, for the record, I just want you to understand why my vote is a yes. Is, number one, the house and the garage predated our farmland buffers. It was existed prior to...so I don't feel that they have created a violation in a farmland buffer since they predated that. Also, for a long, long time, it has been a commercial site. There was a kennel that predated the ordinances and the change of the zone. It was there even though this is not a kennel, it's a roofing business. It was semi-commercial business, which also predated the zoning there. So for them to carry on a business, I think it was a technical...something that kind of fell through the woodwork, not knowing that they needed to go down and refile to keep this a legitimate business at the time, whenever they purchased the property. This is just cleaning that up. We had other issues that came on board trying to clean it up that I feel would have been addressed way back then, and we wouldn't have been here at this time. So my vote is yes, due to the fact that predated our farmland buffer.
Motion carries. Application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron.
Thank you.
Sorry it took so long.
That's okay. Good things come to those who wait.
Okay. Okay, we're going to change the agenda here a little bit. I want to bring up case number BA 1914, April Rizzi. This is a certificate of nonconformity. Application of April L. Rizzi. I hope I'm stating that correctly. FKA April L. Bryant, as applicant owner seeking a certificate of nonconformity to legalize the existing cottage as a pre-existing nonconformant secondary residence on the premises known as Block 149, Lot 9433, West Farms Road. Expiration date, December 13th, 2019. Welcome, sir.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Rick Brodsky, on behalf of the applicant, April Rizzi, as the chair...
Rick, hang on just a second. Mr. Tropoli?
Yes.
Can we have a sidebar for a second?
Sure.
Rick?
Mrs. Connolly? How busy?
Mr. Brodsky was my attorney 20-plus years ago, and I just wanted to clarify, you know, that there was no conflict between the two attorneys first, and, you know, I don't feel there is a conflict, and I'll let Mr. Brodsky and then Mr. Tropoli at this time put something on the record also.
Wendell, as you know, the standard is whether or not you can render a fair and impartial decision based upon the facts before you. This is an old relationship you have with Mr. Brodsky. I presume you've had nothing recently with either Mr. Brodsky or the firm, and is there anything about this application that would cause you not to render a fair and impartial vote in one way or another?
No, sir, there's not, and if it was a bulk variance or a D1 variance, then I'd probably step down. But being a nonconformity, you know, I...
Mr. Brodsky?
There's really nothing to...
I have no objection.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think we could proceed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Brodsky, sorry about that.
Thank you. No problem, Mr. Chair. As I indicated, the applicant, Mrs. Rizzi, who's seated to my right, is the property owner. It's an application, as the chair indicated, for a certificate of nonconformance to confirm that an existing cottage that exists on the property today is a legal, pre-existing, nonconforming secondary principal residence, and that's the nature of the application this evening. Mr. Tropoli, if I could, I would ask if service, if you've had a chance to review service, and it's in order?
Everything is in order, Mr. Brodsky.
Excellent. And so, the application before you, what I'd like to do, unless the board would like to proceed in any other fashion, I would, I'll just give the board a brief overview of the nature of the application, of the facts, and a little bit of the history. The property is located, as you know, 433 West Farms Road. It's in your ARE2 zone here in town. The applicant, Mrs. Rizzi, purchased the property in 2006. The property is approximately 3.94 acres. There are existing on it and have existed for some time four structures. There's the main two-story home. There's a two-story barn that exists on the property and has. There is a one-story detached garage, and then there is the, what we call the cottage, which is the secondary principal structure that forms the subject matter of the application before you this evening. As I said, Mrs. Rizzi purchased the property in '06. At that time, the seller, there was someone residing in the cottage at that time, in '06, and in fact, when Mrs. Rizzi bought the property, her mom immediately moved into the cottage and resided there through approximately 2017 or so. It was at that time that Mrs. Rizzi and her husband moved out of state and listed the property for sale, and that's about the time that Mrs. Rizzi's mom moved out. Mrs. Rizzi moved out of state ahead of her husband, and he actually resided in the cottage for some time thereafter, and the property remains listed for sale because they, Mr. and Mrs. Rizzi, have located to out-of-state. We are lucky, and of course, with regard to a certificate of nonconformance, basically the applicant's burden is to establish that the cottage that forms the subject matter of the application was, is, exists and exists legally. That is, in this case, predates 1957, predates the zoning ordinance. We are, and that's often a tough thing to prove when you're going back for such a long period of time. We actually, Mrs. Rizzi, did a great job, and with the help, by the way, with the help of township, of people here in the township, in terms of guidance, on telling her what she needed to do, was actually able to do a few things, including gather some aerial photos which show the cottage existing as far back as, I think we have a couple, one from 1947 and one from 1953, showing the cottage on the site, one. Two, and even luckier is a prior owner of the property who bought the property back in 1958 or so, lives next door, and he's here this evening. So he has a good handle on the history of the property, and, you know, you don't always get so fortunate to have such an easy reference or direct reference tool. So in any event, that's where we are. That's where we are with the application. We've got the aerial photos. We have the neighbor who will hear just a short bit of testimony from with regard to the historic, the history of the property. We have received, which you have, a number of agency approvals, fire, or agency reports, fire pure or shady tree, county board of health, farmers advisory, environmental commission, all have no comments, no objection. And we do have the report from Mr. Conliff dated August 8th, which we'll go through real briefly. He had a couple of items that he wanted, questions, clarifications, that Mrs. Rizzi will offer as part of her testimony. So...
Mr. Brodsky, at this time, how many witnesses you have?
Just Mrs. Rizzi and the neighbor.
You want to bring them up?
Sure.
Mr. Tropoli, let's go ahead and swear them in.
Yes?
Raise your right hand. Raise your right hand. There you go. Right over here, sir. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so to God?
I think I will.
Very good, sir, and may we have your name? Your name, please.
Alexander Pavnev.
Thank you. Ma'am?
April Rizzi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Also...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tropoli. Okay. Mrs. Rizzi, if you would, you heard the sort of overview that I gave to the board, and was everything accurate that I presented to the board? Okay. And I just wanted to go through a couple of things, just for the board's clarification. The aerial photographs, can we have them listed, I mean, viewed up there? Or do we...
We'll try. We'll try.
Okay.
I'm not making any promises.
Okay. I just wanted to show the aerial photographs, which are not the clearest copies, but sure.
Equipment they have at that time.
Yeah, yeah. So, Mrs. Rizzi, you heard me mention the aerial photographs that you were able to gather of the property dated 1947 and 1953, which we're going to put on the board in a minute. Can you just describe to the board where you got those and what they show?
A gentleman named Matt and the department said that he had gone online and found aerial photographs of the existing property. So he directed me to the website where I could view them and purchase what was available.
Is there a date on those photographs?
Yeah, so the one that's up there right now, is that the...
1947.
1947 one. And, okay, how do we show the board? Can you direct the...
You all have that in your packet as well that I left there.
Yeah, it's in the packet, and can you just show the board how we're going to do this, April? Just point out to the board where the cottage is.
The main house is down on the bottom. To the right of that is the garage. Directly behind it, nope, that one, is the two-story barn, and then to the left, right there, is the cottage.
Right. Okay.
And that was in '47.
Right, and then there's another one from 1953, which is a little clearer, and I guess it would have to be, and there you go. And then same thing, you're showing the cottage back there.
Well, it's reversed now. The house is up towards the street side. No, down, a little up. That's the yard. Up, house. Directly behind that, that's the garage. That's the barn, and to the right is the cottage.
Right. Okay. And other than that, we've established that you've now listed the property for sale, you've moved out of state, right, and you are here in order to get this certificate of nonconformance so that the property can be marketed without an issue and clearing up this issue. And it came to light, the township contacted you after, I guess, some potential...
No, I contacted the town because I had heard from people who were interested in purchasing the property that the cottage was not listed within the township.
Okay.
And that it could, it didn't exist, and then the sale fell through because of that. So I came to the town and I spoke to Matt, and he's the one that told me how I would have to proceed to have it notice that it was a pre-existing structure.
Okay, and then one other exhibit that I just want to draw the board's attention to specifically is A9, which is, you had done some research with regard to the windows, right, that exist in the cottage?
Yeah, they wanted to verify that they were, how old the building was, and the building has old weighted windows. I forget what they're called.
Yeah, the double-hung...
The double-hung with the weight...
Rope and pulley.
Rope and pulley windows, and those were not new. They were very, very old.
Manufactured, what, between the late 1800s and 1945 or 1940?
Forty, I think was the last time that they were for sale, and they're throughout the cottage.
Okay. Any questions for Mrs. Rizzi? Okay, real quick, if we could go, and I'm going to say Mr. Alex, because I don't want to botch the pronunciation of your last name.
Okay.
All right? So, Mr. Alex, you have previously sworn, right? And if I'm correct, you purchased the property we're talking about back in 1958?
Fifty-eight, right.
Okay. And at that time, was the cottage that we're talking about, the little house that you referred to, was it there?
There was, everything was there, like you showed.
Okay.
And I don't know, if they don't know, after I bought it, and after I sell it, that three times, the people buy it three times, and nobody noticed it? I don't know what they were, what they was doing.
Okay.
They should be know because the cottage was there.
Now, let me ask you this question. So when you bought it in '58, you were telling me about some of the history of the property, and that the cottage, I guess the property had been used as an egg form in the past?
There used to be 20,000 acres, there's three cheeks in that. There was one barn...
Twenty thousand chickens?
The barn was 300 feet, the 250 plus, the other one about 100, and so many small cheeks around. There was 23 acres in there before, when I bought it.
And then you subdivided at some point.
When I divided, that the last time I bought that house, I forget it, that in the 70s, early 70s, there was the Pre-Holt Lambert Company. The guy was in the township, and he, I tried to sell that property, there wasn't enough $200 supposed to be for every one of them.
200 feet.
But left over only 100, no, 187 feet, and I couldn't sell it. Then the guy told me he was working with the township on Adelphi Road at that time, old one house. And he told me, he said, "Alex, everything go right, you can sell it, but it will be three and a half acres like a farm." That's it.
All right.
That was it.
And let me ask you this. So as part of your purchase, you bought it in '58...
Yes.
But, and the reason I brought up the egg farm was that you knew that the cottage was actually occupied by...
It was occupied before.
People who had been working on the farm back during the...
Even that cottage was, they were there 1924, with a big will and still working. But I don't know what, when they put it in, but I know that.
There was a 1924 refrigerator in the cottage when you bought it, and also you knew that workers from the egg farm had been...
Yeah, they used to live there, the workers.
Okay.
Because a lot of people was working in that at that time.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Alex?
Any questions on the board?
No.
Professionals? Good. That's good.
Okay. One last thing, I just wanted to go through real quickly, Mr. Conliff's report dated August 8th, 2019. He had asked a couple of questions, and I just wanted Mrs. Rizzi... He had asked a couple of questions, and I just wanted Mrs. Rizzi to put the answers on the record. So just going to, just going to paragraph two, with regard to the use of the two-story barn and the one-story garage, there are two loft areas. But I just want to ask you, Mrs. Rizzi, are the loft studios habitable or used or ever have been used for living space?
No.
And do you ever, do you intend to use them as living space?
No.
No. And with respect to that loft, the loft space and the workshop, as far as you know, you've never used it or for any type of commercial business?
No.
And you don't intend to do that?
No.
And it's always been used in conjunction with the personal use of you as the property owner?
Yes.
And as far as you know, the prior owners as well? Correct?
Correct.
Anything else for Mrs. Rizzi?
Yeah, Mr. Brodsky, I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Real quick. Okay, Ms. Rizzi, are y'all still going to plan on selling the property?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'd like to ask, Mr. Brodsky, do you have any objection us putting that in the resolution, that those spaces in the barn, the two loft areas, all of that is non-commercial?
No objection.
And no leasing out or rentals of those properties?
No. We would want the right to have the cottage as the second principal structure.
I understand. I'm talking about the barns.
Absolutely not.
Rent it out for outside businesses or anything, storage or?
No.
Okay. Mr. Tropoli, you have that?
I do.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, unless the board or the board's professionals have any questions, that's all I have for.
Okay. Charlie, we'll go to you first.
That's, Mr. Chairman, you beat me to the punch. That was the thing I was going to ask, if they would agree to a condition of the resolution for that, should the board be favorably. I think they put testimony on the record, obviously, from the prior owner, that the cottage existed prior to 1957, and that it was, you know, used to house farmers and workers of the farm for the chickens. So, you know, I take no exception to any of the testimony that's been provided. That's all.
Jennifer?
I agree.
Okay. Any questions of the board?
No.
Okay, my only other stipulation would be that this would not be a subdivided piece of property, that the cottage would always remain part of the homestead.
It's under homeowners.
It's there.
Yeah.
So it can't be.
And, you know, I feel, you know, we've had other situations that's come to the board before. One was on, actually, West Farms Road, catty corner to Kirk's Floors, where they had his elderly parents live in there. And then once they passed, what do you do with the apartment? So, you know, we've had this before. So, you know, and the board has ruled in those cases also.
So.
We just have one recently, right down the street from the one by Kirk's Floors, so.
So what I would just say to that, Mr. Chairman, is, you know, this is a certificate on non-conformity for the cottage and its existing footprint. So if the applicant were ever to put any additions or modifications to it, they would then need to come before the board for a use variance because it's two principal structures on a, you know, on one lot. And then same thing, too, with, if the lot were ever to be subdivided, same condition, it would be, you know, a new use variance that would be recreated by it, so.
Okay. Now, another question to you, Charlie. If they did an addition to the house, they would still be required to come back because it's still non-conforming?
Yes.
Do you understand that?
Understood, understood. And, Mr. Chair, I think the minimum lot size is two acres in this zone, and they're shot, they've got 3.94.
No, I know, but it still, it still doesn't.
I understand.
Keep you from applying for a subdivision.
Just pointed out, yeah.
Okay. Okay, anything further from the board? Professionals? Can I have a motion to open the public?
I'll make a motion to open the public, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion by Mr. Hughes, seconded by Mr. Roscoe, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. So anyone in the public wish to come forward and make a statement or comment, or ask a question? Seeing none, can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Cantor.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Professionals, do you have any further comments or?
All I'd say, Mr. Chair, is typically what we require for an applicant to demonstrate a certificate, you know, that they are eligible for a certificate of non-conformity, is that the use or the structure was in existence prior to the zoning. And I do think that through the testimony of the applicant, through the aerial photography that's been provided, as well as the prior owner who remains a neighbor, it is very clear to me that the structure has been in existence prior to our zoning and would take no exception to the board acting favorably.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Brodsky, would you like to?
Nothing further, Mr. Chair. I would ask that the board act favorably on the application.
Okay, thank you, sir. What's the pleasure of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion to approve case number BA 1914, with the stipulations that the chairman had brought across and our engineer. And I think the evidence that this was here beforehand is obvious. So I vote yes, or make the motion.
Thank you, sir. Motion by Mr. Mertens, do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Seconded by Mr. Moretti. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Moretti.
Yes.
Mr. Oroscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Seiya.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
And Chairman Nansen.
Based on all testimony put on the record, questions and comments that were placed on the record, along with the agreements of resolution, my vote is yes. And being in the township for as long as I have, I know the property, and it has been there for as long as I've known it. So my vote is yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, thank you.
Yes, sir. Okay, the zoning board's going to take a 10-minute break.
The zoning board will now reconvene.
Yes, sir. Okay. Case number BA 1407A-2, Tal Holdings LLC, Tal Holdings II LLC. Use variance, bulk variance, minor subdivision. Applicant at Tal Holdings I LLC, Tal Holdings II LLC, is applicant owner seeking a minor subdivision approval for subdivided existing Lot 34, creating two new proposed lots. The entire residential apartment and business complex to remain on proposed Lot 3401, and the remaining portion of existing 34, Lot 34 located on ARE2 Zone, will continue within the proposed Lot 3402, which will be a flag lot utilizing a 30-foot wide, 291-foot long swath along the northern property line of existing Lot 32, which will provide future driveway access from Brickyard Road for proposed single-family dwelling with septic system. The remaining southern portion of Lot 32 is to remain for proposed single-family dwelling with septic. The applicant also seeks a use variance, bulk variance, design waiver approval for this application on premises known as Block 175, Lots 32 and 34, at the intersection of State Route 33, Business, and Brickyard Road. After some testimony on May 13th, this application was carried to July 22nd, 2019, with no further notice. July 22nd, 2019, the application was carried to September 23rd, 2019, with no further notice. Expiration date, October 31st, 2019. Eligible voters, Hughes, Mertens, Moretti, O'Donnell, Oroscoe, Seiya, and Nansen.
And Mr. Cantor has certified.
Mr. Cantor has certified.
Good evening, Chairman, board members. Stephen Hambro, H-A-M-B-R-O. The firms Hambro and Mitchell were located in Dayton, New Jersey, on behalf of the applicant, Tal Holdings I and II. I had a brief conversation with Mr. Tropoli a couple of moments ago, and what we're going to do, because of the fact that this started back May 13th, we really didn't get very far, actually, on May 13th. So we're going to present, really, from the get-go, start all over again. We didn't speak for more than 10 minutes, maybe, and there were some issues that arose and questions that the board had concerning an LOI, if you recall that, and other somewhat environmental concerns. So we said, you know what, let's address those concerns. And then we met, I guess it was sometime in maybe June, with the board's professionals, Mr. Cunliffe and Ms. Beam, and went through the plans and discussed things that could be adjusted and tried to address the concerns that had been raised by your board, board professionals.
Mr. Tropoli.
Mr. Chairman, as Mr. Hambro stated, there was a probably maybe 10 minutes' worth of testimony at the time. I'm looking at my notes, and they indicate that the board had several concerns with respect to wetlands possible in the area of the proposed driveway access, concern with environmental issues, whether or not there were soil logs on a new proposed lot, among other things. And just for the purpose of clarification, I have no objection to starting basically testimony fresh, provided that all of the questions that had been raised by the board professionals be addressed in your direct testimony with your witnesses. That would be the ground rules for starting again. They would have to basically come back in and revisit the areas and weave in the answers to the board's questions. Because you left here with a laundry list, as I remember. And I presume, Mr. Hambro, you're ready to address that with your professionals?
Yes, as you know, I think it's, there are two reports, revised reports from Ms. Beam and Mr. Cunliffe, which strikes out many of the issues that have been raised and bolds any new issues or new comments. So we're going to address all of those comments as we proceed. As you are, as you kind of stated, there was a question about LOI and soil logs. We've gotten, going back to DEP, you're going to hear from Mr. Geller, who is our engineer, regarding that issue. And, you know, we'll basically present and try to address the questions that have been raised or concerns that have been voiced by the board.
So that would mean all board members are eligible at this point?
That would be correct. Because what we'll do then is we'll, Mr. Hambro, why don't you bring up all of your witnesses that'll be testifying tonight? I'll swear them all in, and then you can address each one as you move forward.
Okay.
All right?
Thank you.
So folks, come on up.
Please raise your right hand, Mr. President, tonight, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, self to God.
I do.
So starting with you, may we have your name, please?
Yes.
James Miller, M-I-L-L-E-R, Worstedown, New Jersey. I'm a professional planner.
Michael Geller, G-E-L-L-E-R, engineer in Adelphi, New Jersey, and I'm a professional engineer.
David Backman, B-A-C-K-M-A-N, a license site remediation professional with Dynamic Earth.
Tom LeBrow, L-O-B-R-O-W, representing PA Holdings I and II.
Okay. You can sit down.
I was going to suggest that, thank you.
That's a mic right in the middle of the table.
Yeah, no, it's a fancy, fancy mic we got.
Sometimes it works, sometimes it doesn't.
It seems to be working pretty well from back there. So our first witness, because I wanted to off, right out of the gate, address those environmental concerns.
Right.
We have Mr. Backman, who is an LSRP, a license site remediation professional with Dynamic Earth. He, I'm going to ask him to come forward. Do you want to testify from there, or do you want to sit?
Either one.
Okay.
You can sit. You can use the hand mic or, Eileen, do you have Charlie and Jennifer's report?
Yes, sorry. I thought I left them for you. I did. I left them for you earlier.
No, no reports here. No. These are all... I have this one.
Right here. Jennifer and Charlie.
That's it?
Yep.
Oh, I thought there was more.
Well, they revised them, so those didn't exist.
These are the most recent?
Yes.
Okay.
So, David, if you don't mind, I'll call you David.
Sure.
If you would, please provide to the board your professional qualifications.
Sure. I graduated in 1991 from Susquehanna University with a degree in environmental science. I've been an environmental consultant since 1991, practicing environmental consultant. I was actually in the first group of licensed site remediation professionals in 2009 that were licensed, and I've been out, I've been working as an LSRP ever since.
And just for the board certification, what exactly is an LSRP, and are there special qualifications and education that you need certifications to?
Sure. So a licensed site remediation professional, that program was set up by the department to basically privatize the way that sites in New Jersey are cleaned up and remediated. Basically, you needed, at the time, you needed to have 15 years of experience, working in a management role, making decisions. I had those credentials at that time and continue to work that way. So basically, the way the licensed site remediation program works now, as opposed in the past, was when sites were cleaned up in the past, we would actually write reports, file the guidance documents that the department had established, send it into the DEP, and one of their case managers would agree or disagree, and then ultimately sign off with a no further action letter. Since it's been privatized, what happens, we actually, as licensed professionals, similar to a professional engineer, would follow the rules and guidance. We have a professional license, and we're signing off on the remediation. The department now works as a, simply as a checks and balance and audit program.
So when you say the department, you're talking about Department of Environmental Protection?
Department of Environmental Protection.
Okay. I would offer Mr. Backman as an expert. Have you appeared before boards and other, in court as a professional, as a licensed site remediation professional?
Yes, I have.
And any in Monmouth County that you can refer to?
I have been before Eaton Town, I've been before Brielle, I've been before Manasquan, Ball Township, Neptune.
Okay. We, Mr. Tropoli, any issue?
No.
Professionals?
No.
Okay.
Well, back me up on this. Now, he's absolutely accurate on the program as it exists today, so I have no objection. I don't think anyone here does either.
We accept credentials.
Okay. So the reason that we brought you here today to testify is to address those concerns that the board had raised, which was then set forth in Mr. Cunliffe's report. And have you had an opportunity, what have you reviewed prior to coming here to testify in front of the board?
So I've reviewed a number of different documents. The original Phase I environmental site assessment, which was prepared by Environmental Management Group out of Point Pleasant. There was a subsequent Phase II investigation that was done about a month after that, which was focusing on historically applied pesticides. I reviewed the township's letter from earlier this year, the engineering report. And then also, there was a comment letter that the Peter Richings from Environmental Management Group had prepared in response to the engineer report.
Okay. So addressing the report from Mr. Cunliffe in particular, there were comments that he made concerning the documents that we are just discussing.
Right.
At comment number 15 on page eight of his report dated July 17th, 2019, can you address, can you go through his report and the comments, or however you'd like to best address?
Sure. Okay. So the first comment is with regard to the operational or the date upon which the Phase I was completed, which was back in 2013. That report was completed as part of the environmental due diligence package for the respective buyer at the time. And since that time, Phase I's are only good for 180 days, as long as, well, they're good for a year, but after 180 days, you have to do some minor updates to them and make sure that they're complete. At this point in time, there is no lending. make sure that they're complete. At this point in time, there is no lending requirement, lender requirement to do a new Phase One, and the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, the site isn't in the environmental, the site remediation program. So, the DEP's not requiring any sort of update to the Phase One. To my understanding, that possibly the board may be asking for an update to the Phase One to bring it up to more current date. So, I'm not sure if I'm asking a question in there, or...
Well, it tells us that the DEP does not require...
The DEP does not require an update to the, to the Phase One.
Okay.
Charlie, you jump in anytime.
Yeah. So, obviously, the Phase One that the applicant provided was done in 2013. I think at the prior meeting, some of the members had, one, expressed a historic concern with the use of the site, you know, possibly being an auto salvage yard. You know, we were kind of hoping that Mr. Richings would be present to provide some testimony as to his analysis of the site in 2013 about historic use of it. Another report said there was removal of an underground storage tank. During that removal, there was some spillage that occurred, and there were some actions taken to correct that spillage, in which they got, you know, a letter of no further action from the, DEP. You know, basically, we had a question, you know, that just RFA is strictly to that underground storage tank. It doesn't, my understanding is it covers the whole, entire site as a whole. We just wanted to get more information on the record as to the entire site and the prior use of the entire site, not just an underground storage tank. So, did you have a chance to review Mr. Richings' Phase One?
I have. And I, and in my professional opinion, the, the Phase One that was completed by Mr. Riching followed the standard and, and was, was comprehensive. The other questions that you had brought up about the underground storage tank, the proper, prior use, possibly having some sort of automobile salvage operations or something like that on site, I'm here to testify to that extent and kind of explain a little bit further what Mr. Richings had maybe not as well documented in his report, but I can provide some additional information.
Okay. And then just to follow that up, there was also a comment and concerns that I had with reviewing the aerials from 2013 to now. There's certainly been some clearing that has occurred on the site with trees. You know, my understanding that the township has issued some permits for some tree clearing and some vegetation removal. Having said that, it does look from the aerials that there's been some stockpiling of materials on the site in that time since 2000, 2013 to 2018. Obviously, there's some adjacent uses on the site with a contractor's storage yard. There's also an area that was approved to be used for an association with the farming of the original storage lot 34. You know, there's always a concern when you see stockpiles, is a material that originated, originated on the site, is a material that, if there's an adjacent contracting business, is it debris that came from off-site onto your site? Is there any issues with contamination or anything like that? So, we were hoping to see some testimony from an environmental professional in regards to that, the use from 2013 to, to, to current day.
So, Mr. Backman is here to address strictly environmental issues, not in terms of the tree issues. I mean, we can, we were going to have, and I think we, at our meeting, we discussed this as well, what the uses, where the materials that you're talking about is being quote-unquote "stockpiled," derived from or came from, what they consist of, and, and we can address that. But Mr. Backman is not to address that, not here to address that specific issue. I think his, his, his issue was, was with respect to, or his issues were with respect to, you raised as environmental and potential cleanup or remediation.
So, just with, yeah, so, I mean, it's kind of intertwined, you know. You know, the Phase One is just a site in 2013. If, if there's been other activities ongoing on the site since that time...
Then 180, 180-day update would be required.
Well, typically, I mean, I don't want to steal your thunder, Dave, but typically, a Phase One is a voluntary action between two individuals that are involved in a real estate transaction to protect the buyer against environmental contamination or some issue that's, exists on the site. Somebody purchases a piece of property and doesn't go through that exercise, and then something is found on the site, then they themselves are responsible to clean it up. If they do a Phase One, or a PA, I don't know what the right term is any of these days, but, right?
Linear assessment.
If they do that, and it's, the intent is to identify potential issues that would then, could require further investigation, and it's really from, it's primarily for liability protection between two private property owners. So, I guess the question would be, this owner owns the property and has owned it since 2013, so there hasn't been a transaction that would kick this requirement into action. However, that being said, the applicant was here and these issues were raised, and so, I guess that's why Mr. Backman is here, to address those concerns that have occurred post-2013, after the initial review was done. The only thing that I would say, Mr. Hambro, is that it's disappointing, from my standpoint, that a letter dated July 22nd was sent to the board secretary at almost 4:00 PM on a Friday, when the, when the case was, has been scheduled for multiple months, knowing it's going to be heard the following Monday. That really, I think, is a bit much. And, you know, while this board is a little bit more flexible, I do work for other boards where you wouldn't even have gotten out of the gate because we didn't have the information 10 days, 10 days in advance. So, it puts us, Charlie and myself, on kind of the defense when you get something at 4 o'clock on a Friday, when this is scheduled on Monday night, and this is something that had came up in May. So, I don't appreciate that myself. I think that that's something that should have been forwarded to us. It was, the letter was dated July 22nd. It is now two months later, and to get it the Friday before is, puts the two of us at a decided disadvantage, which I don't appreciate.
So, with respect to that letter, that was Mr. Richings who had prepared the letter. Mr. Richings advised me on Friday afternoon, after having been in contact with him for a long period of time, that he was not going to be able to appear here this evening on Friday. And then I said, okay, I'd rather have him testify rather than present the letter to the board. I sent the letter because I didn't even know, know that I was going to have anybody available, and so what we did was contact Mr. Backman. Mr. Backman reviewed the documentation from Mr. Richings, and he's here as a live person to testify regarding that.
I can respect that. I do think that the correspondence should have been forwarded, whether Mr. Richings was coming or not. It's definitely something that came up in May, absolutely was something that we spoke about at our professionals' meeting in June. The letter was drafted in July, and here we sit two months later, having gotten it a day before. So, to that end, I mean, I don't need, need to belabor the point. I have a lot of respect for Mr. Backman. I've known him for many years, so I don't take exception to him being here instead. I just wanted to put that on the record because, you know, for the two of us to receive something with very little time to review, you know, you rely upon us to provide you with our opinion on the validity of certain items when it comes to these applications. And typically, we get these applications weeks in advance to get something on that short notice. Knowing that the board was concerned about it, I don't think was probably the best way to go about it.
Well, I apologize if that was, that was unmade. The intent, the intent, let me under, let me just state this. The intent was to have Mr. Richings come and address those issues that were raised in Mr., it was a response to Mr. Cunliffe's report.
I understand.
And the idea, the, the thought was that Mr. Riching was going to come in and testify directly regarding it. I don't, I, I think having a person come in and testify is much better than, than a letter.
Well, I would, I would disagree. I think we should have had the respect of both, because then the two of us would have had an opportunity to review it. He comes here and presents it, we're not hearing it for the first time ever. When they look at us and say, what do you think? My question, my answer is going to be, I need time to review it and to think about it, because environmental issues in many instances are complicated. So, I understand what you're saying, and I respect that. I don't agree. I think the letter should have been forwarded, whether he was coming or not, and then he could have provided testimony to substantiate finding the letter, giving us the professional courtesy of having it in advance, giving us the opportunity to review it. And maybe we don't agree with his conclusions, but right now, we're at a disadvantage, because we weren't given the opportunity to really delve into it more than a day.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
I agree with Ms. Beam. I was wondering that before, when they were presenting their case, did they get notification prior to the meeting? And I was surprised that neither one of them seemed to be prepared to answer any questions, because, as you say, if a person is testifying, how are they going to review that testimony right at this moment? So, I agree, I agree with Ms. Beam. They should have gotten a written notification first, and then they could have had the testimony tonight.
With at least 10 days.
Yes, I agree.
Well, I mean, if, if it's the board's or your preference to just disregard that letter, the, the whole point of the letter was because Mr. Richings was not going to be coming to testify. I had asked him to testify. He said, let me, let me write this letter. You probably won't need me. I said, you know what, I prefer to have you come. So, at the last minute, he says, I'm not going to be able to appear. I said, okay, let me send in this letter. We're going on Monday night, and I don't want to belabor this, but I think he was just addressing some of the, the questions that were raised in Mr. Cunliffe's report of July 17th, and responding to that, to some of those questions regarding what he had done as far as a, as a phase one.
So, you know, what I would say, Mr. Chairman, is we're, we're back to the point. So, Mr. Backman is here talking about someone else's report from 2013 for Phase One, you know, and he, he's providing testimony, he's looked at it, that there's no issues with the historic use of the site. But I think this question mark is still the use of the property from 2013 to now. I still haven't heard anything with regards to that. I don't know if the representative of the, of the owner can put some testimony as to the operations that have gone on the site. You know, I was kind of hoping to hear something from an environmental professional with regards to that, that they have gone out to the site, visited the site, looked at the conditions, you know, looked at historic aerials, you know, reviewed information with the applicant in regards, you know, to the use of the site since 2013.
I agree. So, are you prepared for that?
What I've done is I, like I said, I've reviewed the reports, and I've done some document research through the internet, looking at historical aerial photographs, some Google Earth images, things like that, in order to help bolster my support of the document.
But this is strictly on this document, correct?
Uh...
The environmental management?
No, no, that's the letter.
That's the letter.
That's the letter dated, what's the date on that one?
7/22.
July 22nd, 2019.
That was simply the response of environmental management to Mr. Cunliffe's report.
Okay.
And the concerns raised in the report about the Phase One, the time and the applicability of the, of the Phase One.
Right. That's all he's here to testify is a Phase One?
No, no, no. No, he's, he, well, he's here to testify about what was done as part of the Phase One. The Phase One was not just one letter, the Phase One...
No, I, I understand.
Right. Was voluminous documentation. There were, what, 500 pages of, of documentation?
Okay.
So, to address the concerns, and I'm hearing the concerns, we do have the testimony of the owner of the property, the operator of the property, as to what has gone on there, because there's been talk about the stockpiling of materials.
I understand.
And what he is going to tell you, I mean, I'll have him tell you, but what he's going to tell you is that the, and that's what he told Mr. Cunliffe and Ms. Beam when we met with them back in June, that those are materials that he's going to be using, pavers and other materials that are going to be used in the driveways, on the properties, to create the roadways in the driveways. He does hardscaping, and, you know, he knows that this is what he's planning to do. That's what he's going to do. If it assuages the board, Mr. Mister Lobrow, LeBrow, has indicated that we will do an updated Phase One, and we can put this entire issue to, to rest. And we would do that as, as a condition of, of any...
But I, I, I think it's more involved than that, though. And I, I don't want to bring up old testimony or old, the, the other case, but I specifically wanted to know about the clearing that, that was brought up back at the, at the first meeting. There was additional clearing to these lots over here.
We, we are going to address that.
Huh?
We are going to address that. We have, we, we provided a tree permit for Lot 34, and we have photographs and my client's testimony as to what exactly he did as far as any clearing.
What about 32?
32? Well, he was advised that he didn't even need anything, because it was all underbrush and undergrowth.
Okay.
So, he can talk about that.
Okay.
And we have some photographs of what, what the conditions were like when he first purchased the property and what he did.
So, Mr. Chairman, I just want to jump in and just clarify something. So, there was discussion in the prior meeting that we had with the applicant with regards to, right now, stockpiling of hardscape materials, construction materials for the future development of these two residential lots, should the subdivision, you know, get created and approved? That was limited to the area, if you look at the subdivision map, or the proposed subdivision map of Lot 34.01, the northern portion, which had some prior approvals for the use of an agricultural, you know, use of Lot 34. My questions were the existing Lot 32 and proposed Lot 32.01. There's been some, I can, I'll pull that up.
Yeah, I think that's... Yeah, because it's kind of hard to read this little bit.
Yeah, pull that up.
Which way is north on this?
Yeah, I'm missing the...
North is this way.
Normally, it's in that arrow.
It's right there.
Oh, it is?
Right there.
Oh, I see it. I'm sorry.
Oh, geez.
It's hard to speak.
Yeah, it's hard to read this now.
So, north points away from Route 33.
Yeah.
Okay. May I ask you a question? In viewing the video, I'm a little confused. Is there supposed to be an LOI, Letter of Interpretation, from the DEP?
We, we started from scratch.
Okay.
So, the video kind of doesn't have anything to do with this at this point.
Okay. So, that LOI is not...
Well, we, we're going to address that in a moment.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, looking at the, the map here, this is just a zoomed-in view of the subdivision map provided by the applicant. So, Lot 34.01, proposed Lot 34.01, there was some discussion by the applicant that they'd like to continue to be able to store hardscape and construction material, you know, Belgium block, things of that, in that area there.
But where is that?
Right in the center.
The drop, okay.
Yeah, 34.01. So, and then Lot 32 is, proposed Lot 32.01 is, that's what I'm questioning. So, there's been some clearing of that lot. Applicant has represented that they've gotten some permits for a clearing of some trees and some underbrush from the township. However, looking at aerials, you can see over the last several years, there's been some stockpiling and not, not hardscape materials, but like sediment, you know, of aggregate type of materials. You know, I'm, I'm looking at an aerial, so I can't tell you precisely what those materials are. I was hoping to get some testimony from the applicant or professional as to what those materials were. Were they materials that sourced from that lot during the clearing process? Was it materials that came from off-site in association with some construction activity being operated from the property? You know, my main concern is materials coming from off-site, if they're then stockpiled, where did that come from? Is that construction debris from a demolition of a house, you know, with contaminated materials or things like that? That's what I was hoping to get some testimony as to, the stockpiling of materials, debris, aggregate on that lot.
On which lot, 32.01?
32.01, yes.
I, I don't believe that there's stockpiling of materials on, on Lot 32.01, and there certainly has been no debris or demolition from any outside places. The only thing that I'm aware of is when they built the pole barn on Lot 34, that some of the, the...
Do, do you have a witness that can testify to this?
Yeah.
You're testifying now.
Well, no, I mean, he's raising questions, which...
I, I understand, but...
You know, we're, we're, we're dealing, trying to deal with the environmental issue.
I, I understand, but, but what you're, you're testifying at this point. You're telling us what's there.
So, why don't we put that aside?
Okay.
And let Mr. Backman finish up what he can tell us about the historic uses on the property?
Okay.
And what his review reveals.
Let's, let's do it that way.
So that we can address as much as we can.
Okay.
Finish with him and come on to our next witness.
Okay.
All right?
Okay, okay. So, going on to 15B, there is a question about a 1,000-gallon underground storage tank that was removed...
tank that was removed from the site.
What was that, fifteen what?
It was a one-thousand-gallon number two.
Fifteen B is Mr. Kuntz's report on page eight, paragraph fifteen B. Mr. Bachman just had addressed the, the Phase One and the extent of the duration of the Phase One, so to speak, and it's.
Okay, based on, okay, is he addressing this letter, though? Because it, it says right here, comment fifteen A, and under that comment of fifteen A states the thousand-gallon tank.
Correct.
And I, that, that's where I'm confused. We're talking about fifteen, you know, different things, but.
Under fifteen A, in the letter that you produced on Friday.
Yes.
The last sentence, "Full compliance with the requirements of a preliminary assessment for regulatory submission would have involved a review of available NJDEP files, including an order of magnitude analysis for soil sample data generated during the removal of the former one-thousand-gallon underground fuel oil storage tank."
That's fifteen A based on environmental.
You're talking about the July twenty-second, twenty-nineteen?
Yes, that's the letter I have, and I, I have Mr., the July twenty-seventeenth, two thousand nineteen letter. Now, if you're referring to fifteen B, that would be, okay, now, okay, this is Mr., this is T and M's letter, correct? That's what we're addressing?
Right. Mr. Bachman is, is addressing Mr. Kuntz's letter.
Okay, so we're not, we're not even looking at the environmental management.
So I think, yeah, I think he added in, I guess he did it in a hurry, and, and that's really why I didn't want to provide it.
Steve, if I could just cut in. So just to kind of clarify it, so I issued a letter in July, on July twenty, July seventeen, twenty nineteen, with items fifteen A through E. Subsequently, we received a letter this past Friday that was dated from July twenty-second, twenty nineteen, prepared by Mr. Richings of EMG in response to my comments in my letter dated July seventeen, so.
Well, the, the comments are out of whack.
Yeah, so I would just say, based of, you know, my review of it, it looks like their response to fifteen A is trying to respond to both A and B in that review letter. It's kind of addressing both of those as one, as one item.
Okay, so let, let me rephrase this. What, what the testimony is being testified to has nothing to do with this letter, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so we could just discard this letter?
That's fine, that's fine. I'm, I'm basically going off of the June seventeenth.
July seventeenth letter.
Sorry, July seventeenth letter.
Okay, so what we're going to do is discard this letter, that way, the, the testimony that's being placed on the record is not backing up what the environmental did with this letter, correct?
That's, I can handle it, sure.
Okay, now, my question is, the research, did you research, the, the research that they did, their files?
I did, I didn't go and look for additional files, I was just trying to provide some additional information to help you guys understand exactly what Mr. Richings was doing while he evaluated this underground storage tank issue.
Okay, so where did you get your information if you didn't research?
It was based on the information that came out of the Phase One report.
Okay, the Phase One report, was environmental management the one that did that Phase One report?
Correct.
So you, you're testifying based on their information in their files, correct?
Right, I'm trying, I'm trying to clarify something that was, that's in that, that package of information from the Phase One.
Okay.
All right.
Everybody understand where we're at? Okay, Charlie, any?
I'm trying.
It's okay to?
So I think that summarizes, obviously, the letter we received Friday was from Mr. Richings, you know, elaborating on his report. Mr. Bachman is here providing testimony on that original Phase One in response to my comments fifteen A through E in my July seventeenth letter, so I, I would take no exception to what he's testified.
Okay, so, no comments on this letter, here, where, that's gone. It's new testimony being placed on the record based on the Phase One report, correct?
Correct.
Yes, so, so just so we're clear, that was what was provided on Friday, as I had explained, and Ms. Beam was upset about, was the late provision of that report. Again, it was only because Mr. Richings is not going to be here, so that's why we put Mr. Bachman here.
Okay, how much time did you have to review that Phase One report?
I was notified this morning, asking for any documentation that was available, which was the information, the Phase One, and the correspondence that went back and forth after that. So I moved that today.
Okay, now, now, we, we were told earlier in testimony that that report is over eight-hundred pages.
Five hundred.
Five hundred pages, well, it, it doesn't matter if it's five hundred or eight hundred. Were you able to review that report?
So to clarify, to clarify, the Phase, that's a very good question. To clarify, the Phase One report is really made up of approximately twenty-eight, thirty pages. There's a executive summary in the beginning, there's details about how all the investigation work was done throughout the investigation, and then there's a conclusion and recommendation section at the bottom. The remaining pages, the, the other four hundred and seventy pages are all backup documents to the Phase One, so it was all the research tools that Mr. Richings had looked at in order to develop his report. So I didn't go through that line by line, but I did look at very specific things that were targeted in the, in the review letter, the engineering review letter.
Okay. Charlie, have you had opportunity to review that letter?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, so the, subsequent to our meeting, the full environmental Phase One was provided to us electronically by the applicant's attorney. I had personnel from T and M Associates who are experts in environmental, you know, site Phase One analysis, take a look at it, and that's what generated a bulk of the comments and my questions regarding. So, a lot of the Phase One, it's, it's limited to any activities that occurred prior to 2013. It doesn't address anything that's happened on the site since 2013.
Correct.
And then, the big thing of it was, obviously, I think it was, Member O'Donnell had raised a concern about prior auto salvage use of the site.
Right.
Our review of it didn't find any specific indication whether or not there was a lack or presence of any historical indication of that. We were looking to have a professional come here and provide some testimony as to, in their analysis, their Phase One assessment of the site, did anything exist or not?
Okay, and to your, your opinion, Charlie, was, did the Phase One address any of the, the, the auto salvage areas? Did they, did they do testing or test borings in the auto salvage?
I didn't see anything in there specifically to that effect, and then, you know, I also noted, obviously, with the underground storage tank, you know, there was a letter of no further action identified. My understanding from our environmental professionals is that that's limited to just the spill that occurred at the time when the underground storage tank was removed. That doesn't cover the entire site or any historic spills that might have occurred prior to that storage tank being removed. So that's one of the other prongs that we kind of asked for some additional information was.
Okay.
Throughout the entire site, were there any other issues addressed? I know in the Phase One, there was some identification of historic pesticides associated with the farming use of the site. Mr. Hambro has put some testimony as to some additional Phase Two analysis that had been done with regards to testing for the historic pesticides. But, you know, like I said, as far as any prior historic auto salvage use, we were hoping to hear some testimony in regards to that.
You prepared for that?
Yes.
Good, let's go.
Okay. So I'll go back to fifteen B, which discusses the underground storage tank issue.
Yes.
So the, the underground storage tank was removed in two thousand five, there was a release. I'm not a hundred percent sure how, why the, the case was called in. There could be a number of different reasons for that. They could have seen free product, meaning products outside the tank and laying in the excavation. They could have had analytical data that showed that there was an exceedance of a standard, or they could have just simply had holes in the tank. That's all reason to call in a spill to the DEP. So, subsequent to that, the, there was not any information, it doesn't look like there was a file review done at the DEP to get those specific details of what exactly happened. But there was in a, a no further action letter, meaning this is, you know, as I mentioned before, there is a response action outcomes, which an LSRP would sign off on. The department has its own program for unregulated heat and oil tanks. So mostly it's residential properties, capacity-wise, residential properties, they handle them themselves, they, they let LSRP's out of the situation. So what had happened is they did their own review, they completed their investigation, and they determined that, yes, it looks like this was complete. They issued a no further action letter with a covenant not to sue. The company that actually had removed the tank had then taken the information and provided it to the township, which the township had an open permit because they failed the inspection, meaning there was holes, there was a, a release, whatever happened. But when they got that information back from the DEP with a no further action letter, it was closed out. So in this situation, as an environmental professional, I look at that, that's, that's, that's a lot of information to go by to say that the, the tank was cleaned up successfully. The other thing I will mention that.
But that's just the tank, not, not the site, correct?
Just the tank issue, I'm only talking about the tank right now. So the other issue in here was a mention of an order of magnitude analysis. As a licensed site remediation professional, if I was being retained to clean up the entire site and issue a response action outcome for the entire site, I would definitely go back and look at these additional, additional materials, the reports that are out at the DEP. However, an order of magnitude analysis isn't even required in a situation for number-two fuel oil spills. And the reason for that is, is that in two thousand ten, the protocol by which we evaluate the spills had changed. So back in the day, they were looking probably at a protocol called total petroleum hydrocarbons, and then running a separate analysis for volatile organic compounds. We don't use that anymore. In two thousand ten, we changed to extractable petroleum hydrocarbons, it's a different analytical testing method. So you can't really look at it apples to apples anymore, and the DEP, the way they look at it is, well, they complied with the rules at the time, so that no further action letter would stand in this situation. To make everybody feel a little bit better, I looked at this myself, and, and looked at the, you know, some of the additional information, and I think that there was probably, like I said, I don't have the actual report, but because the underground storage tank program had closed it out, I believe this is, this is a clean tank removal project. Okay?
Okay. So, just in terms of, you mentioned something about the size of the tank, so it was indicated it was a thousand-gallon tank?
Thousand gallon.
And that would typically be used for what purpose?
Heating oil, for onsite consumption.
So there was either a house or?
A house or, you know, office building, whatever, some, some sort of structure there.
Okay. And was there any, any indication of contaminants in any other locations on the, on Lot thirty-two?
It, that wasn't addressed with, with the underground storage tank. I guess one of the other, that's, this would lead us into one of the other questions here. So if we go to fifteen, and ask me questions if you have questions about the underground storage.
Well, I do, on a, on a thousand-gallon tank, back in the day, those were used as diesel fuel tanks for farms.
It could be, it could be used for diesel fuel as well, but this, this is specifically a, it was number-two fuel oil tank.
Okay, or, or, do you have any documentation stating that, that it wasn't a diesel?
If you look in the Phase One, there is some, there's details in the, from the UCC forms that they, the contractor that removed the tank, he, he put that in, into the, the forms.
Okay.
So there's documentation in there about that.
Okay.
Okay. So, in terms of, you were going to start talking, and one of the things that was raised was the historic usage and the question about whether there was storage of automobiles?
Right.
Did you look into that at all?
So I did. What I did, and this is kind of using some hindsight, I understand that there was a concern from one of the, the board representatives about, you know, I guess he knew that there, you know, from his own personal recollection, that there was a quote-unquote auto salvage yard or something like that at that site. So obviously, as an environmental professional, that's a grave concern, those, those, those types of operations are really dirty. So what I did, my, my first hunch on that was to go back and look at the Phase One report, look at the aerial photos. Those, it's really hard to hide, you know, a couple hundred cars, and if you're actually doing some sort of automobile salvage operations. So as I look through everything, the only aerial photo, both from the Phase One environmental report that was previously done, and also my own research based on historical aerials, it's a website that you can look at, historical aerials, go and go it back to nineteen thirty-one, there was only one aerial photo from nineteen ninety-five that looked like there may be some sort of features, and I'll just quote-unquote "features," that were located on, on Lot number thirty-two. As a professional, the evaluation of that one single aerial photo didn't really lead me to believe that there was a significant operation of automobile repair, or not repair, salvage operations going on. There were a number of features, like I said, probably ten to twelve of them, could have been trailers, could have been automobiles, there could have been something else, it was hard to really decipher. So then my next step on that, to try to build some lines of evidence, was to go back and look at the evaluation that Mr. Richings had done, to see if he had noticed anything in his report. And there was no mention of any sort of automobile repair, salvage operations. There was nothing found in the township files about an operation that was going on, and there was, when they actually did the site walk, they walked around that area, they didn't find any evidence of that. There was no stressed vegetation, there's no stained soils or anything like that. So that's why I believe Mr. Riching, Riching didn't bring that up, there wasn't any other information to corroborate what was seen in that nineteen ninety-five aerial photo.
Jen, you've been here a long time. That, that's about the, when, when did the motor, motorcycle shop close? That, that was?
Around, right before I think this individual purchased it, right? It was like mid-two thousands, late-two thousands?
Somewhere there.
Well, he purchased in twenty thirteen.
Right, so it was obviously predate that.
Historical, that, that's what we're looking at, the, the motors, the salvage yard was there whenever the motorcycle shop was there.
I would say it's probably early two thousands.
From, ninety-five is about right.
Yeah, I'd say.
But it, it was there.
Charlie has some information.
So, Mr. Bachman?
I'd also like to just, just interject, it's, I, I didn't see anything that was a salvage operation. It looked like there was a couple of cars parked there.
There was a lot of cars parked there.
That's big difference, so.
There was a lot, I, I remember when they cleaned it up.
So, Mr. Bachman, so you said you looked at aerials from ninety-five, did you look at any aerials from two thousand two, like on Google Earth or anything like that?
Yes, I, I ran through nineteen thirty-one to the present.
Okay, so, you know, I have just an arrow that I printed out from two thousand two, and there is a decent amount of vegetation, it looked like it might have been taken during the fall, but you can see, you know, littered or scattered throughout Lot thirty-two, that there is what looks to be some automobiles, trailers, you know, structures, as you, as you might call them, permanent or temporary, however.
Right.
Scattered throughout the lot, and it's not just a couple. You know, I would submit this to Eileen, so that it could be, become part of the record, I don't know how that would be marked, Eileen, if there's a way to do that, or if it's, yeah, you can take the first one.
Automobile salvage. Automobile salvage operations are usually more organized. You, you would see cars in lines and rows, there would be a, a car crusher.
No, but this, this was not a legal salvage operation.
Okay.
I, I can tell you that right now.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I've been handed a photograph, which appears to be an aerial, handwritten notation, twelve, two thousand and two. We'll mark this as Board Exhibit sixteen, but I would like Mr. Hambro to look at this first.
Yeah, let the applicant see, please.
This was referred to in Mr. Conliffe's earlier testimony.
Yes, absolutely.
This was from two thousand twelve?
Two thousand two.
Two thousand two. So this is-
Is that correct?
Yeah, so.
Two thousand two, Charles, two thousand two, correct?
Yeah, twelve, two thousand two, and it's just a screenshot from Google Earth, you know, readily available, where you can go back in historic time and, and look. And, you know, there might be some fluctuation as to what exact month that was taken at, but on Google Earth, it's indicated as December of two thousand and two.
Rock, can we pass that down to board?
Thank you. Rich can initial it too.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
What's the number gonna be on this?
B sixteen.
So, and just to follow that up, Mr. Chairman, so, you know, I just wanted to give a representation to the board of something that was readily available as to what the site looked like. And, you know, I'm saying a lot of things, there's, there looks like there's been clearing and there's been historic activities. I'm gonna say, I just wanted to provide a representation. You know, the subdivision plan and, and the concept, conceptual grading plan, you know, is just a black and white piece of paper. Mr. Bachman has provided testimony, he's looked at the aerials, and he's saying that there's no, you know, historic auto salvage use of the property. I just wanted to provide it as a representation to the board so that they can weigh both Mr. Bachman's testimony and then also, you know, some aerials that are readily available showing the historic state of the, of the property in question.
So, Mr. Bachman, do you have any response or comments to the aerial that was provided from two thousand twelve, two thousand and two as represented by Mr. Conliffe?
Sure, that, that, Charlie, that, that photograph you showed me definitely seems very similar to the nineteen ninety-five photo. Much better resolution than I was, I was able to, to pull down off of, off of my review. I would still say that it doesn't appear to be auto salvage, it's probably sloppy housekeeping. I do agree, there's, there's quite a few vehicles and, and other debris there. I'd really have to dig in, you know, look at that a little closer.
Yeah, the owner, the owner of the property had a wrecker service.
Okay.
That's, that's why a lot, the older board members that spent in the township a long time, we knew what went on there.
Right.
You know, and that's, I for one know that he had two wreckers.
Okay.
You know, and for, and there's a lot of those cars that went in there were mangled. And so, you know, just knowing the prior history of the property, we know that it went, went on there. And that's, we're just looking for a guarantee that there is no oils that are gonna contaminate or affect the property in any way. That, that's, that's all we're looking for.
Understood.
So, so would the phase one have addressed that question, given, I mean, you described how they walked the site in twenty thirteen? Would the phase one, or should have phase one at that point have picked up if there was any type of visible? I mean, tell me what, what, what is done when somebody does a phase one?
It's, it's kinda hard to, in hindsight, really kind of critique another report. I mean, they're following a set of protocol in order to complete the ASDM standard for, for completing a phase one. If the environmental research data from the town isn't there available that would trigger that, or he was, didn't have, he didn't have access to somebody that he could have interviewed on the site, or a, a neighboring property owner, something like that, that would have tipped him off to some of the information that you guys know, then that may not have been able to ship, you know, come to light doing the report. Obviously, if we know that, that's an issue. The first thing that I would do is go back out to that site and look at it a little bit closer.
Right.
But it's, it's, it's hard to say that, you know, did he, was he negligent, or did he miss something? It's, he followed the ASDM standards, but the background information wasn't available.
Right. And see, you're, you're, the, the applicant purchased the property in two thousand thirteen?
Right, correct.
Okay, if they cleared the site, cleaned the site up in two thousand eight or nine, the, the growth would have come back, so nobody would have known historically what, what it was unless they did that research. So, in a, in a phase one research, wouldn't it be behoof of whoever's doing the research to go back to the, the aerials, back like you did, go back there and then pull them up and then kinda see the historical value on that site, you know, what, what went on?
Well, like I, like I had mentioned, I went back and looked at two sets of aerial photos. One set that was provided in the phase one environmental report that was completed by the other consultant.
What date was that aerial?
That, their report showed a nineteen ninety-five aerial photo.
Okay, and that's the one you picked up to where it looked like stuff was there?
Correct.
Well, now, if you were doing that report, I, I assume that, which is bad to do, but I would assume your firm does phase one reports, am I correct?
Yes.
If you saw that photo, what would you have done?
If I, if I, based on the information that I looked at today, I would have questioned whether, you know, something was obviously going on there. Like I said, there was those features that I could see. I did not have, I was not privy to the-
No, I'm not asking that, but if you had a nineteen ninety-five aerial that you reviewed today, and you saw that, what would be your response as far as the engineer doing the report?
Well, my, my next step would have gone out to the, the site and started to look around to see, hey, are those features still there? What could they have been? I would start to look at some of the available sources, go back to the town, see if there is any sort of telephone records, was there a business operation going on at the site? There's a lot of different things that we look at and try to lace them all together in order to make a professional, you know, decision on it. And because that stuff wasn't in, included in the report, that's how he made his conclusion, that he just didn't have any of those, those pieces of information available.
But that wasn't, that wasn't in the report, you know, they, how did they address the nineteen ninety-five photograph in their report? How did they address that?
They-
Inconclusive?
Inconclusive.
Okay. So technically, they didn't do a full site analysis?
Well, they, they make mention of, you know, all the activities and all the historic activities on the site.
Yeah, but what were those activity? I haven't read the report, so I'm not able to, to physically address that. If, if I, if I would submitted that report and I read it, then I could have a nice intelligent conversation. But I, I'm trying to fill in the pieces. You know, I see a phase one report dealing with the thousand gallon fuel tank. Okay, that's one thing. But the board, I don't care about that, that was deemed, you know, completed. We, we know that. Our concern is the site.
Well, the, the phase one addresses the entire site and surrounding properties.
They didn't. How did they do that, and they allow this to go by?
Wanted to end conclusive.
It, it's inconclusive, so they didn't research the site.
So it's suspect.
That's what it's telling me.
They, they researched the entire site, but there wasn't enough cooperating information based on that one aerial photo to do any further site phase two work.
Well, they did this in two thousand thirteen. They had full access to those, the same satellite. You know, they, this is information, you know, that, that I feel, I, I, I wish Matt was here 'cause I think he could fill in some of the pieces. But I think there were citations issued on that site for the cleanup, you know, from the township. Did anybody research that? That, that's what I would like to know.
That, that should have, violation should have been reviewed. I mean, I, I can't defend that, that's, that's part of the investigation. So they should have looked at township files.
Did, did they look at township files and permits?
They did, but there wasn't anything listed in there as a violation or, or anything that they dug up or that they included in the report.
So they referenced though that they did do a search, and that there was nothing in the township records that-
Correct.
If there had been-
That's what they reported.
If there had been some type of violation on record, would that have triggered, would that have triggered something in there, as far as their need to investigate further?
If there was something there, that would, they would point that as a recognized environmental condition or a business environmental risk. They would have pointed it out.
Okay, let me ask a question, let's, let's cut this at this point. Would the applicant be willing to do a site evaluation? To make sure there's no contaminants on that site?
Yes, we would do an update of the phase one, and in fact, we discussed, I discussed with the applicant before we came in to testify about precisely this issue, and making sure that the phase one, or the updated phase one, addressed the board's concerns. And maybe you wanna talk about that a little bit, what it would do exactly in terms of what the board is looking for at this point?
Sure. What, what we would do is, it's not really an update to a phase one, there's really no such thing, except for the hundred and eighty day issue, you would do an update. So what we would be doing basically is redoing the phase one. We'll be using the, some of the information that's available in the two thousand thirteen report, but then we would bring that all the way up into, you know, current time. So that would address Charlie's concerns as well.
Charlie, you have any issue with that?
I think that was the whole goal of a lot of the comments and the questions that I had is, you know, not just historic, but things since that two thousand thirteen up to the current time. So I think it's a question for the board whether they feel like they need to see that information before they, you know, go further with the application, you know, or if that's something that they would consider as, you know, something as a, a condition of any resolution of approval for, for the, you know, for the application. I, I would say I would wanna see the full picture of what's going on in the site, what has occurred, you know, prior to two thousand thirteen and after two thousand thirteen, before I make an informed decision on the application. That's, that's my professional opinion and feeling of it.
What we pay you for, that's why you're sitting over there, is we, that, that's the information we need.
Chairman?
What would be your direction to the board, though? That's the whole thing.
So, what I would say is, you know, you could let the applicant, he's got other witnesses here that are, you know, prepared to provide testimony on the other aspects of the application. We could let that proceed, you know, we're at nine-thirty right now. I don't know how far we're gonna get through with the rest of the testimony, whether or not we're gonna conclude that tonight. We can see where we end up, and then if the application were to get carried and we don't finish, maybe the applicant can procure that information and provide it to, prior to the next meeting, you know.
At least ten days.
Hopefully ten days in advance of the meeting, yes.
Hey, do you have an issue with that?
Let me just confirm that with my client.
Let's take a five-minute break.
I just wanna, I just wanna see something. I just wanna make sure that they're referring to a nineteen ninety-five photo, and Charlie, you're referring to a two thousand and two photo. So now, during that span of time, additional cars could have been put into that little lot or removed from that little lot. Can we have a photo by photo, year by year, check on that to make sure?
That was included in the, the original phase one. They do a photo by year, but it's not a year by year, but it's whenever the planes were flying over. So there, if you look at the nineteen eighty-four aerial photo, there's no evidence of the, any sort of cars or anything there. The nineteen ninety-five does have some of those features, which were all assumed now as cars. Then the next one that was in the report was two thousand and six, and it looked like it was, it was pretty overgrown, so you couldn't really see very much from there.
Well, we missed one photo of the two thousand and two, it shows additional vehicles. So I think we should check in that area, two thousand and one, two thousand and two, two thousand and three. I mean, to make sure that that area has that, has that perspective in your report.
Right.
Hey Dave, can I just make one request? If you're going through the process of updating or revi, or doing a new phase one, or whatever we wanna call it, those aerial photographs that are included in the original phase one are at a scale that make it very difficult to even identify the site, let alone see anything on it. Moving forward, if you're gonna resume these duties, if you would be so kind as to take the aerial photo, the aerial photography that you're able to obtain through whatever means, and really kind of maybe zoom in a little bit, and then do us a favor, instead of just, 'cause what I'm seeing on those aerials is just kind of like the arrow saying site location. If you could like show the site and zoom it in a little bit, because it could refer to a location that maybe you're not wanting, you know, like an off-site location, because it's a scale, it's so high up, you can't really-
That's, that's typical for the environmental data resources packages.
But I would just ask, if you're gonna take over this moving forward and providing the board with this information, if you could just, it doesn't have to be just the site, but just zoom in a little bit so that it's a little easier to ascertain what is included in the site and what is not.
Yeah, we, we kinda do that as standard fare, 'cause obviously some more information, more things you can review, better understanding of the history.
A hundred percent agree. So I just wanted to put that on the record, because I think part of the reason that Charlie's is so easy to see is that it's really focused on the area that we're talking about, and these aerials in this report are taken at like ten thousand feet, and it becomes-
Yeah, but they were taken by aerial airplane.
Right, but you could, you can take that information and zoom in on it, like scan it into the computer and like focus it. I know Dave knows what I'm talking about, just to make sure that we're really talking apples to apples when you're looking at these maps, it makes it a little bit easier maybe to put like the boundary of, of the site on the maps as well, would be helpful.
Yeah, and, and going year by year, the resolution's always a little bit different. Some of the aerial photos that you get when you do these investigations are completely worthless. It's just a big fuzzy blotch, you can't see anything. Other ones, like the one that Charlie had presented, that's very clear, so.
Okay.
So, I just wanted to ask if, other than the two thousand and two, and we talked about the ninety-five, nineteen ninety-five, were there other photographs that you came across in your research, Mr. Conliffe?
So, like I said, I just utilize Google Earth, it's readily freely available. I just looked, they have an, an option where you can look back at historic aerials taken by Google Earth from current day, or I think the most current one might be July of two thousand and eighteen, going on back to nineteen ninety-five. And I think you'll find, depending on what sources you use, a lot of those aerials may overlap. Google Earth tends to have a little bit resolution, a better resolution than some than others. I just, like I said, there's a lot of discussion about aerials and dates, and the board doesn't have anything in front of them. I just wanted to provide them with something that was freely available, that could be readily, you know, obtained, just showing them a reference point in time, you know, two thousand and two.
Okay. So, so just in terms of, okay, we have this information, we can get these aerials. The question then becomes to me, and I'm just a layperson, I'm not an environmentalist, what do you do with that information documentation? Do you go out to the site, you do a little bit more intensive look and examine it? I mean, what is it that we- examine it? I mean, what is it that we're, we want, if we're going to do this, let's do it right and.
Soil samples, soil samples.
Soil samples.
So, you know, I think what the applicant can do is do an update or a new phase one for the site as of current day, looking back historically. His phase one hopefully will identify if there's any issues. Hopefully he'll cover whether the historic, you know, possible auto salvage use of the site. And through that, if they identify that additional soil analysis is required, then I think the board would want to then see that additional analysis. But phase one is usually the first step of that. Our biggest concern is obviously two thousand thirteen versus current day, two thousand nineteen. And then obviously, you know, we didn't find anything directly mentioning a possible auto salvage use. We were hoping that Mr. Richings would be here to provide testimony on the report that he prepared. I know it's under, you know, it's difficult for Mr. Bachman, even after reviewing something, to provide testimony on someone else's report. I was just hoping to hear it from the source as opposed to, you know, to someone else.
But given that we're saying that Mr. Bachman is going to do his own, basically his own phase one, all right, and his own investigation. I think once he does his, we don't need to deal with what Mr. Richings had done.
No, we, we already put that one aside because we don't have testimony from him on his report. And that, that's why I was asking, I, I hated to be hard on that, but you know, to deal with the five hundred page report narrowed down to twenty-four pages, there, there's, there's a lot of overlooking of information since he did not do that report. He didn't do the full analysis throughout those five hundred pages to put down into the twenty. It, it, I've done it all the time, all my, all the years of my professional business and doing, reading reports. You know, if, if I didn't gather the information for that report, sometimes you're left in limbo. You know, you can put your own interpretation to it, but you really don't know what happened, you know, and, and what, where it came from. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but that, just dealing with that. You, you're basing, he's basing and he's putting his professional opinion on somebody else's report without knowing the full facts through the research. I, I, that, that's just how it is. Especially getting it today and reviewing it today. You know, you just, you, you can't do that. But reading that twenty-four pages, he can put it into his terminology. That's why I didn't even want to use that report. And, you know, just based on his professional opinion of what he's reviewed, we're to this point. And addressing what the board wanted to address was the, the historical use of the site. None of that was dealt with in phase one, except the tank. I, I know they probably did do some research for looking around the site, but not knowing what historically happened there. They're not going to know, you know, to do any soil analysis or anything throughout the site.
Well, they also did do some soil because that was one of the issues raised that they saw. I mean, you can address that in terms of the historic, the pesticides and.
Well, that, that's the farm property. Where, where, that's thirty-four.
You're talking now about thirty-two. You're talking just about thirty-two.
On thirty-two, really wasn't much of the farm on thirty-two.
Right.
You know, thirty-four was basic farm. You know, they, that was, where to say, that was historically farmed.
Right.
So, you know, it, I could understand that being, you know, i- i- if I walked out there as an environmentalist or even as an engineer, I would see farming operations and that would be the first thing I would think about was historical pesticides or herbicides. Which I, I agree, that needs to be addressed and they probably did address that in the phase one report. But knowing historically that there, there was automobiles being moved in and out of there. You know, just historically knowing the site, that's, that would have been the first thing I did when I, if I walked on the site. Knowing historically the site. But, you know, just being a, a, a environmental engineer walking onto a site, not knowing, after it was cleaned up, not knowing what participated there. It's kind of hard to think, you know, hey, this, this fine area had all these cars in.
So what we're going to do is, is Mr. Bachman, Bachman is going to, um, his firm will do the analysis. But I want to make sure that it's addressing the items that you feel are pertinent and that are important to the board so that we do it the right way and, and you're satisfied.
I, I feel that you really need to stay in contact with, with Charlie. You know, i- as far as the historical and, you know, you've got Matt also as far as the historical from the township. You know, just kind of put that together that way.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chair, you know, we've probably have spent the better part of an hour just negotiating whether or not there were sufficient environmental, um, evidence on the record. And I, I could clearly see that the board is going in a direction that you don't have enough information tonight. Not that it's going, it does not appear at all to go to a vote tonight. The real question in my mind, and again, I, I don't want to surprise anyone, is that it's a quarter to ten. And whether or not any production of the phase one in, in the future would change any of Mr. Hambro's professionals' testimony.
Correct.
Um, you know, Jen brings out a good point. Um, it could certainly impact the use, the D two aspect, which could cause the planner to possibly go in a different direction depending on the environmental. And again, I, you know, my concern is getting the complete record out. You could continue, but again, at this point in time, when we appear to have a very, uh, large question about the historical use of the site, I mean, in terms of planning proofs, I don't know how that could be something that could be completed tonight. So the, you know, this application has gone on now for at least, what, an hour and a half? And we don't appear to be that far in yet again. So, you know, I'll, I'll defer to my, uh, professionals, but I, I think, you know, Charlie raises a good point. And I think Jen, quite frankly, not speaking for Jen, and I never would, it's, it's probably uncomfortable with, you know, with hearing planning testimony. So that leaves us with Mr. Geller. But again, you know, my concern is that, you know, perhaps the board should consider just stopping it here and, you know, moving forward at another time. And I'll, I'll, I'll let my professional, you know, my colleagues here discuss that.
I would like, I would like to address Mr. Hambro's, uh, letter, September twenty-third, before we do that, dealing with the farmland buffer.
I'm sure we could solve that issue.
Yeah, I, I would like to at least solve something.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chair has seen that I appear to be, have been the one who have received it. I've received a letter this afternoon from Mr. Hambro, which basically stated that in his position, the, uh, section one eighty-eight sixty-three of the buffers and screening part of the ordinance does not apply to this application. And I told her briefly I disagreed with it. Um, I'm going to ask Jen to chime in on it. I mean, clearly at one time, this was part of a larger subdivision and it was a major at that time.
It was a site plan.
And, and a site plan as well. So, I mean, if you, you follow the read-on rule in the statute or in the ordinance, you know, I think it applies. Particularly since that originally this was a site plan application and a, it was a, what, a major.
Well, I agree, and I also think that like new lot thirty-four oh one, based upon representations made or is going to continue to be utilized as part of the commercial operation, which is really an amendment to the site plan application, which, you know, was the application that this board heard years ago. And that lot, uh, shares a lot line with the, uh, proposed lot thirty-two oh one, which is a residential lot. And therefore would require compliance with the buffer. You know, to that end, again, I want to place on the record the fact that this issue came up in May and June. We discussed it and to get a letter this afternoon is also a little difficult to swallow, given how long this application has gone on. So to that end, I agree with Ron. I think the buffer applies. I have been very clear and consistent on that opinion since this application has started. Um, and I have expressed that opinion to the applicant on more than one occasion.
Well, not only that, it's just, you know, even creating a subdivision, you know, the farmland buffer, if, if thirty-two oh two is going to remain a farm, you gotta have a buffer to that farm.
Thirty-four oh two, you mean.
I, I can't read this.
Yeah.
This big lot behind, you know, the flag lot, what, what number is that?
The big lot?
The big lot.
Big lot in the back is thirty-four oh two.
Okay, thirty-four oh two, if that's going to continue being a farm or if it is farm assessed, you know, you, you have to have a farmland buffer to that. That's, that's one. Not only that, uh, the lot directly above thirty-four, thirty-four or.
Thirty-five oh one.
Thirty-two, i- is that, they creating, creating a new lot thirty-four oh one?
Yep.
Am I correct? There's, there's got to be a fifty foot buffer between that and that farm that's above.
I agree.
All of that's got to be.
We talked about this at the last meeting.
I know. All of those have to be farmland buffered and.
I mean, I think, I think under the circumstances, given that thirty-four oh one, which is, you know, was where Charlie was talking about like the staging of some hardscape materials and what have you.
That's not supposed to be happening there now.
Is an amended site plan, basically, and that all site plan applications require a fifty foot perimeter buffer regardless of whether there's a farm or not. Um, here it's, you know, it's like a double whammy because you have the farm situation in addition. Um, but this is more than just a simple minor subdivision. This is a use variance. They're amending the use of that lot thirty-four oh one from what it was when they were here previously for the commercial use. Um, so I, I don't really, I mean, obviously it's your decision, but my professional opinion is that the buffer is required.
But Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, thirty, I think it's thirty-five, whatever, right above it.
Thirty-five oh one.
Yeah.
Thirty-five, that one right there, thirty-five oh one. That is an active farm. It, it's a Q farm. I know it is. Then there's not supposed to be any stockpile within fifty feet of that farm.
Well, there, there is, if, if we, well, I'll let you finish and then if we could make some comments to what.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I could just chime in on that. So I'd be, I believe part of the prior approval was, um, on subject lot thirty-four. There was an approved contractor, um, a contractor's yard that was supposed to be fenced and terminated, you know, approximately in the location where the zone changes from HD two to ARE two.
Correct.
That area behind that in that prior approval was approved to be used in association with the farm use on the remainder of lot thirty-four. It certainly looks from aerials that, that isn't being used just for the farm use. It looks like it could also be used an extension of that contractor's yard. That's what we had some question with, that comes into play with the, you know, amended use variance for the site. I also had some additional concerns regarding the stormwater management for the property. We had a meeting on this application in June. There were some discussions on limiting the disturbance of the proposed development for the two new created lots, the residential lots, um, thirty-two oh one and then thirty-four oh two. Uh, I indicated to the applicant at the time that DEP is, um, providing guidance that is developing. Uh, they're taking a look back at land use applications, um, for the different municipalities over the last five years as part of their municipal, uh, MS four permitting for stormwater discharges. As part of that, um, they're looking at minor subdivisions. They're looking at, um, creeping development of prior major site plans where portions of the lot are then subdivided and then developed sometime down the road. And they're saying that those applications should actually be treated as major developments. So, uh, not just in terms of can the applicant subdivide the lot and then sell it off and then someone build a single family residential dwelling. They're wanting to see the applicant comply with the stormwater regulations for major development um, as far as water quality, water quantity, treatment, groundwater recharges and things like that. Especially given the fact that the subject parcel, the source parcel, lot thirty-four is a subject of a prior, uh, major site plan. Um, I think any development on these proposed subdivided lots thirty-two oh one and thirty-four oh two would be a major development and the applicant would need to comply with that. I just wanted to put that on the record. I had indicated to the applicant at the time that the DEP, um, you know, their, their guidance on this is developing. If they can provide some documentation from DEP to the otherwise, as far as this specific case, um, you know, the board would consider that, but I think going forward, you know, we need to see it treated as a, a major development.
Charlie, real quick, thirty-four oh two, how many acres is that going to be left with if it's subdivided?
Six and a half acres.
Six and a half, so it is still be able to be rem- now, does that include also the, the entrance?
Yeah, yeah, so it's a flag lot. It's got a thirty foot wide by approximately, you know, a hundred and, I don't know if I'm in there, a hundred and eighty-five foot entrance and then it makes a right-hand turn going north and then the driveway. So I, I can pull that up just for the board's reference, the conceptual grading plan the applicant provided, kind of showing the layout of the, uh.
No, you, you don't need to pull that up. My, my question is, is that an easement or is that going to be deeded to that property?
That's, that's going to be part of that lot. So they're creating a flag lot by that. So on it, as part of that, there are certain restrictions, um, in the ordinance for the requirements for the creation of a flag lot. One of those being is the driveway has to be appropriately screened from the adjacent properties, um, by means of either a fence or landscaping. And I would assume that Mr. Geller, when he was getting up to prepare, provide his testimony would touch on that. And then also, you know, as part of the stormwater thing, that the township also has requirements for driveways over a hundred and fifty feet. First hundred fifty feet of them are required to be paved, um, you know, for emergency access purposes. And then obviously there's the remainder of the driveway and the dwelling itself. So the DEP, like I said, they're providing guidance on this. They're taking a look back, um, five years back during the municipal permits and looking at these applications that were minor subdivisions where, you know, one large lot was then created into two lots and then it became three lots and then it became, you know, four or so on and so forth. They're trying to get away from, um, development circumventing the major development restrictions, you know, um, in place for, uh, you know, stormwater management in the state of New Jersey.
And the, and the consequence of not following the DEP's requirement to come back onto the town, not to the applicant, so that's just important to understand as well.
Okay.
If, if I could.
Yes, sir.
So I think we've indicated that we would comply with whatever's required DEP requirements. We did have that discussion. So Mr. Geller was going, was prepared to address that. The old lot, the thirty, lot thirty-two, or actually the original use variance, which was obtained in two thousand fifteen, was also for a minor site plant, was not a major, but I'm not going to quibble at this point. My understanding is that those lots have been in existence for some time. It's not been a process of subdivision, minor subdivision and another minor subdivision. I think there are restrictions on that. I mean, I'll check the title work and see, but I think those lots have been there for quite some time. In terms of the, the farmland buffer, I, I think we have a major issue with, because thirty-four oh two is going to be farm. It's going to remain farm.
Correct.
And you're talking about the lot on top of that? Um, I'm not sure that it's an active farm.
That is an active farm. Trust me, I know that. It's a Q farm.
Well, it could be a Q farm, but I'm not sure how active it is.
If, if it's a Q farm, that means it's active because that's tested every year.
Okay.
Um, thirty, thirty-four oh one is my concern.
Okay, there's, I think, uh, my understanding is there's an existing restriction, existing buffer restriction on that or, or deed restriction on thirty-four, that front portion leading up to, um, where the commercial operation ends.
I, I understand that, but if you're creating a new lot, thirty-four oh one, if you're creating that new lot, you have to have a farmland buffer there.
I'm saying there is an existing buffer on thirty, what, what will be thirty-four oh one. It's right now flat all lot thirty-four. There is an existing buffer.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I can clarify on that. So there is an existing buffer on the north, or sorry, the west side of existing lot thirty-four. However, that buffer terminated where it transitioned from the contractor's yard to, you know, uh, the portion that's being utilized as, uh, storage of hardscapes and, and block and things like that. There was no buffer proposed on that because the representation that was made to the board was that was just. was that was just going to be for the use of the farm use, yeah.
Exactly.
So.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, before we jump to conclusions, we do, our proposal is to have that be used as farm, that, that rear portion.
Thirty-four oh one.
Thirty-four oh two.
We, we know that, I'm not, I'm not in question of that.
But even.
Mine is thirty-four oh one, because the contractor's yard stopped right there at, at the hatched line. It, it come in and it zied out right there.
Right.
Okay, thirty, the new lot, thirty-four oh one, that was part of thirty-four.
Right.
Okay, that, that wasn't required to have a farmland buffer, due to the fact, because it was a farm. Now, you're creating a new lot, thirty-four oh one, you're gonna have to have a farmland buffer for that property.
Even, even if it's going to be farmland?
Thirty-four oh one is gonna be farmland.
Well, the question would become, I guess, I mean, I, I know we're kind of jumping all over the place, but if you're gonna have this, why create a new lot then? So, like, if it's gonna be combined with thirty-four oh two and used as a farm, then why not just have one lot instead of creating two lots? So, the fact that you're creating a separate lot there begs the question if it's gonna be utilized with the big lot in the back. Why, why do you need it?
Okay, well, we can address that.
Right.
I mean, we don't need to get to it now.
Exactly. We're trying to get to the point to where, when you come back next time, you have our questions answered. That, that's the whole thing, that's why we're having these discussions, is to try to get the information that we need whenever you come. Barring the environmental, this is other information that we're gonna need, and I too, I, I also agree with Mr. Tropoli. You know, the, the farmland buffer is gonna be required in this aspect. It, it's, it's definitely gonna be.
All right, I, I would just ask that you reserve your final opinion until we actually have testimony. I don't wanna provide the testimony, but testimony from our engineer and the applicant.
Well, I'm, I'm just letting you know, the farmland buffer is gonna be required, it, with this application.
But what I'm asking is, if you have farmland, even if it's part of thirty-four oh one, it's farm use, okay?
It, it's gonna be farm used.
Farmland on one side, the other.
What, what's the lot, what's the acreage of thirty-four oh one?
Two point eight six acres.
How much?
The thirty-four oh one, you said?
Yeah.
Two point eight six.
It, it, you're not gonna be able to farm that as a Q farm. You're not gonna, it, it's six acres or more in the township requirement, under a Q farm. But, I'm not basing it on what you're doing right there with thirty-four one, uh.
That, that area, just so, so you understand, that area is gonna be used for tree planting and for, and tree farming in this thirty-four oh one.
Okay, two acres worth of tree farming and everything. Okay. You're still gonna need a farmland buffer. Why separate that from thirty-four oh two?
That's the question.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll address that when we come back.
Okay.
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 So, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to summarize real quick, because there was some discussion on whether there was a prior, just a minor site plan application or a major, uh, site plan application. So, um, my understanding, in twenty fifteen, the applicant came before the board to get a use variance approval for a residential apartment on the commercial property there. Um, as part of that, they got some minor site plan to do some minor contractor, uh, storage area. In twenty sixteen, they came back before the board to amend the use variance and then get a major site plan. Um, they added, uh, a metal storage building at the southwest corner of the property. They were required to put in some dry wells, um, also put in a stormwater basin at the northeast, or, I said southeast corner of the property. Um, so, the source lot thirty-four was a subject of a major, uh, site plan application, and the subdivision that they're creating in this residential lot is from that source lot thirty-four, that was a major site plan. So, like I said, unless the applicant can provide us some documentation or correspondence or have someone from D E P come here and tell us that the continuation of this development by the subdivision isn't a major, uh, development, I think that's how we need to proceed with it.
Okay. You understand that?
Yes.
Okay.
Subdivision's still minor. No, it's major, but the subdivision's minor, right?
Right, well, there's, there's a distinction between what D E P, my, our engineer is typing in, there is a distinction between what D E P may require as far as their stormwater management, things of that nature, which they may characterize as, as major development versus what we're talking about here being a minor or a major subdivision, or a ma- major or minor site, or, well, if it's a site plan, it's a site plan. But, this application, it's our position, this application, yes, that was a, a, a site plan. There was storm drainage, there was, we complied with the previous requirements of this board regarding that detention or retention basin, and that's been completed and perfected. And now, we're coming back for what is a minor subdivision. We're really not changing any, we're not changing any of the uses that are on site. The apartments existed previous to my client purchasing them, they've always been upstairs above the.
Right, we know that.
Yes.
I was on the board at that time.
Right, okay.
But, I don't think that's what Charlie's talking.
So, so, I think where we're in disagreement is, obviously, and we've already talked about it, there's the area that was approved to be utilized for storage of equipment for the farm use and, and materials for the farm use. It appears that they may be used for the contracting use, the commercial use at the south end of the site. Um, and as far as, you know, complying with the, uh, major development, they've already, you know, he's, Mr. Hambro alluded to that they, they comply with the major development, um, major site plan requirements and everything as a prior application. Um, I will note, there was, obviously, the portion that was supposed to just be used for the storage of the farm equipment, that's now being used possibly as a, as a commercial use with the contracting business. But also, there was, uh, greenhouses that were proposed to be utilized in the rear of the property on lot thirty-four. Um, you know, by creating this subdivision, it certainly appears that that now is amending that site plan approval, if those are to be removed. So, I think, like I said, the board needs to review this as, um, a major development as far as the stormwater. The guidance that I have received, um, you know, from D E P as far as stormwater management on these subdivision where it's a continuation of applications that are prior major developments, is that even during the subdivision application, we need to be looking for limited disturbance, stormwater management infrastructure, complying with the major development requirements, not just of the township ordinance, but also, um, you know, the state regulations regarding that.
And if I could just really address that, I, I think we're jumping to conclusions about the use and the storage of those materials. Um, our client, my client's gonna testify about what that is being done, where, the fact is that it's not being utilized in their commercial and their contracting business. This is all storage of materials that are gonna be utilized on the site, on the farm site, and on the, um, lot thirty-two for creation of driveway and paved areas. He's stockpiling it for that purpose. Um, it's not, it stays there, it doesn't get moved in and out. So, you're, you're making a certain assumption here about what the use is, which I'm, I'm disagreeing vehemently with. Um, but also, in terms of the, the, the greenhouses, that was part of the approval, yes, but it was also on, on the farm property, and, you know, I don't know that that just.
I guess, I guess this, where I'm struggling is that you came in here for a minor subdivision, right? And you, we keep talking about this back lot is gonna be a farm, and this lot thirty-four oh one is gonna be used with the farm, but yet, it's still part of the lot where the commercial business is located. So, I'm struggling with why? If you're gonna use that property for the farm, then it should be on the lot of the farm, not on the lot of the commercial business. And I don't really wanna get into the testimony, but I'm struggling with the fact that we keep talking about this piece of property that is gonna be utilized as part of the farm, but yet, you, you've subdivided it in such a way that it's part of the commercial property. So, in between today and whenever you come back, I would strongly urge you to think about why we're doing it this way, and because, from a practical standpoint, it makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. If you're not gonna use it as part of the business, then why not make it part of the farm? I think that would solve a lot of questions that the board has moving forward. And, you know, so, I, I still stand behind my position as before with respect to the, the applicability of the buffering, and I think Charlie has made it very clear about his position with the drainage. And I, I think that at this stage of the game, they have some work to do, and I don't know that we're gonna get any further than we are.
Okay, I, I understand. Okay, let, can I ask you a question, Charlie? Okay, are they subdividing lot thirty-two?
Yes, they are. So, they're taking a portion of lot thirty-two, and they're creating the flag lot, the stem that feeds that lot, that's coming from lot thirty-two, so.
Okay, thirty-two oh one is coming from thirty-two.
Yes. And the, the flag lot portion of lot thirty-four point oh two is coming from lot thirty-two. No, from lot thirty-two.
That's part of thirty-two.
Yep. And then the remainder of that is the balance of.
Okay, so, thirty-four oh one is part of thirty-four, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so they're sub, subdividing off of thirty-four to create thirty-four oh one?
I don't know, I think it's a new lot, I think. I, I, I think we should wait, because I think that the applicant has a professional that can get up and discuss the boundaries of the subdivision and which property comes from what, and so I think we're making assumptions that I said, I, I think speaks to the fact that this is not a very straightforward subdivision and needs clarification, and I know Mike, you know, Mike Geller has yet to testify this go-around and can get up and describe how and where everything got put, where it got put. So, I would strongly suggest, I'm not suggesting you do that now, Mike, because it's, now it's after ten, and so, but I'm just saying, like, when we come back, that, you know, Mr. Geller obviously was ready to testify tonight, I'm sure he'll be ready to testify in the future, but these are some of the concerns, Mike, that we have moving forward that absolutely need clarification as we move the application through.
I agree. Now, we're, my other question is, we're taking two lots and creating three additional lots, correct?
No. We're, we're taking, we're taking two lots and creating three.
That's what I just asked. We're taking two lots, thirty-four and thirty-two, and creating additional three lots.
No, no, it's, you're taking two lots and you're just creating three lots from those two. So, it's just three total lots proposed.
We're dividing lots.
Well, you're creating three new lots.
Three new lots from.
Out from two lots.
New existing lots.
You're taking two lots and creating three additional lots.
Well, not additional.
Not ad, not additional, they're just, they're shifting, they're shifting the boundaries between those two lots to create three lots.
I understand, three lots, but how many lots total are you gonna have whenever you're said and done? You're gonna have five lots?
No, it's gonna be three.
No, you're gonna have thirty-four, thirty-two, thirty-four oh one, thirty-two oh one, and thirty-four oh two.
That's why I had said that when, I think we should take a step back and wait until Mike testifies, because lot thirty-two is going away. It's no longer gonna be there.
That's gonna be part of thirty-two oh one then?
Part of it's gonna be with thirty-two oh one, part of it's gonna be with thirty-four oh two. So, that lot thirty-two will no longer exist in its current configuration. Same thing with lot thirty-four, that's gonna become thirty-four oh one and thirty-four oh two. So, you're basically taking two lots, shifting some lines around to create three, and at the end of the day, there will be three.
Okay, then I, I'm, I'm missing.
Right, so we should just wait.
We need better delineation.
Yes, so I think.
Can we get a full set of drawings next time, please? Can I ask? These, these aren't cut.
Well, I just, I, I think Mr. Geller has heard the confusion, um, and that, you know, just, you know, moving forward, that he's gonna, he will be able to clarify where the existing lot lines, I mean, Mike, I would maybe suggest, in your, Mike, I would maybe suggest in your exhibits, that you have an exhibit that shows like the existing lot lines in red or something, and the proposed lot lines, yeah, it's not clear. So, I mean, I'm looking at it too, it's not super clear. But again, I, I just wanna reiterate that it's almost quarter after ten.
The color?
Show me where they.
Existence, not here. Yes, we, we don't have that.
We don't have that green, we don't have any of those colors.
Yeah, okay, that's why I was asking, can we have a full set of drawings next time? I'd appreciate that.
Yes, we would.
Yeah, I, I mean, if we could, just, I wanna address your question, Jen, if we can, because there's confusion here, and let, let it come from our engineer as opposed to me trying to testify.
I, I agree, but I would, I would just.
But in a matter of three, four minutes, he can probably explain.
I, I, I just think it's gonna, personally.
It's gonna further confuse things, I think. Let's, let's kinda end it here, and then we'll pick it up, that's why I already put my paperwork. I don't wanna, you know, I, I need something in front of me, I can't see that from here. And so, you know, next meeting, we have it in front of us, and then we can move forward.
So, I'll try to address it in, in, in as simple as I can.
Can you give us a little? No, we're good. It's, it, let's, let's get a new date, let's move forward, you hear the concerns of the board, let's, let's just act on that. And your professionals, if they need to reach out to our professionals, they, they have their phone numbers, let them call them, if, if, they, they have any question of what the board needs, those two professionals over there will be able to answer it.
Okay. With all respect, the only thing that we put on was environmental.
Exactly, we, we understand that.
And we're going to be, be updating, get a new phase one to address all of your concerns.
Exactly.
To show that even though there's some historic evidence, um, that we're gonna address any kind of potential remediation that needs to be done, or rule it out.
Exactly.
You're gonna do it with some testing, in other words, yes.
Yeah, they're gonna do.
Some soil sampling and so forth.
Well, whatever, whatever the standards are, I mean, why do soil sampling if it's not indicated by, I mean, may, is, is David going to ask? So, if you could address, um, Mr. Seas' question about.
I mean, if you have vehicles on, and you see that you have physically, you have physical vehicles there that are banged up, you know, that had oils and fuels in it, wouldn't you wanna at least sample that area?
Sure. What we, what we would do, what I typically do when I, uh, I'm in an automobile salvage yard, or I'm in a situation where I have an impound lot, something like that, uh, rather than do borings, I usually open it up with, um, doing test pits. Okay, that, that gives you a little bit clearer idea of, you know, you can get strata, you can see, uh, contamination and things like that a little bit easier, um, plus, we can kinda scrape the ground a little bit and see if we see anything on the surface, if that's the type of.
That'll work, absolutely.
And then if we see anything, we can confirm with, uh, field screening tools, uh, analytical testing at the laboratory.
Leads to an E C P if necessary, et cetera, got it, okay.
And we're also gonna check the files in terms of the violations, if there are any violations, which I thought had been done, but we're gonna check it again, okay?
Mr. Chair, I just want to, um, discuss some dates while the environmental, the L S R P is up there. Um, phase one, how long, what is your timeframe on a phase one? Because, you know, what I'm hearing from the board is that they'd like to have it in their hands before, uh, Mr. Chair, correct me if I'm wrong, before this matter's brought to a vote?
Exactly. Well, that, that was under directions of our professional.
No, I understand that, but if that's the case, then, you know, I'd like to know exactly, because it's gonna impact our ability to schedule this again, which, of course, we can, but.
So, what's, what do you, so, well, one of the big questions that, that the board's raised is the, um, underground storage tank. So, in order for us to get that information, that's gonna be our longest lead.
The underground storage tank is already, that's done.
You're done with that? Okay.
Right. Charlie?
I, I would say so. I, I think the applicant needs to address the historic, you know, possible auto salvage, and then obviously, anything from twenty thirteen to current day.
Okay.
That's it.
The, the tank is done, the, the D E P wrote a letter of no interest.
Okay, just making sure you had enough information.
No, we, we knew that, and they, that wasn't our concern before.
Right.
Our concern before was the historical use of the site. That was our concern, and to present day.
Okay. For us to complete the phase one and a subsequent phase two, we're probably talking somewhere around six weeks.
Six weeks. And that, that would be able to give our professionals enough time to review the report?
I, yeah, if you need, you probably need another ten days, you said, so make it two months.
We we collect our data and send it over to them. They can look at it. It'd be two months.
Ron, so technically about two months.
Would December ninth work?
Um, I I have plans to be away December ninth. Do you have a second meeting in November, or you don't have a second meeting in November?
We have a second meeting in November. It's got something scheduled already, but-
What's scheduled?
Secudas.
Secudas? That's all night.
Eileen, I'm not here on December ninth.
No, no, but we we're not gonna reach a vote on that on December ninth, anyway.
The other meeting was November twenty-fifth.
Or December sixteenth, which has a case carried.
Which isn't at Secudas?
No, December sixteenth is Connolly. It's an improved, a house on a unimproved road.
Oh, that shouldn't be.
We just carried them tonight, which they may not be ready for that night, but we don't have dates for next year, so I told them I had to carry them to this year until we get dates, so.
Can we put them on for scheduling purposes?
Who?
Connolly.
Yeah, we already carried them, so.
No, I know, but just for scheduling purposes. Is that possible or not?
Well, they're, right now, they're just carried, so on the sixteenth, we can carry them again, because they're really looking for next year.
They they're really looking for next year?
Yes.
Okay, then let's do that as a scheduling purposes and then put this one on.
Yes.
Is that okay?
If if you would indulge us for a moment.
Okay. Let's take a five, five minute ra- break.
Well, well, we have a very short question.
Oh, okay.
There, during the discussions, there was a suggestion that maybe it would best not to subdivide lot thirty-four. What's driving the desire to subdivide lot thirty-four is the ability to build a farmhouse on the back of the lot, so that it would be an agricultural area in the back with a farmhouse. Now, the impediment to that appears to be that there would be two principal uses on lot thirty-four. But the reality is, there's already two principal uses there in terms of there's the commercial use and then there's the residential use of the apartments. And I guess what what the client wants to know is, would he need a use variance or an amended use variance to put a single-family detached home on the rear portion of lot thirty-four?
That would be thirty, the new, what you're calling new lot thirty-four oh one, correct?
Well, this would be old lot thirty-four, because we wouldn't, we we would drop the idea of subdividing it because of all the issues that that raises with the buffers and what have you. And just utilize lot thirty-four either in its current configuration or maybe with a driveway stem out to the side road there. Brickyard. But the idea would be lot thirty-four going forward would have a a house on it, although the house would be associated with the existing agriculture use. So I think we could make an argument that the house would be accessory to the existing agricultural use, which is already there. So you'd have, basically, at this current time, you have an agricultural use, you have the apartments, and you have the commercial use on lot thirty-four. We would just be adding to the agricultural use of farmstead. Would that require a use variance?
Well, see, my whole issue. My whole issue is thirty, thirty-four oh one and thirty-four oh two. You know, the, you're subdividing those two. Thirty-four oh one, what is a use gonna be for thirty-four oh one?
Again, what we're, what we're proposing is no subdivision of lot thirty-four, just the addition of a farmstead to the existing agricultural use. So the lot lines could theoretically stay what they are, and all we're, all the client wants to do is build a house.
Right.
And that's what's driving this application. There's an agriculture use established on the back of lot thirty-four. It's a longstanding use. Part of an agriculture use is often a residence, and what we're saying is, could he build that residential use without another variance?
Well, Mike, Mike, no, he couldn't.
Because you're basically saying that the lot would be, it'd be one big lot, which includes the commercial piece in the front, correct?
Well, it already is.
I agree, but that commercial piece needed a variance already for the apartments. So now you have a commercial business, apartments, and another house on one lot. So the answer is, yes, you need a variance.
Well, that's not what we're saying. What we're saying is that current, currently, there is the two uses that were granted the variance is which are the commercial use and the apartments. And then there's a third use, which is the agricultural use. It's the balance of that property.
But I'm not, I'm not buying the argument that the house is accessory to the farm. It's the other way around. So at the end of the day, you're adding another principal use to a lot that already now has two.
Well, that that's our question.
Right, so the bottom line is adding another house, the expansion of a non-conforming use, and so, yes, you would need a variance.
Jen, correct me if I'm wrong, thirty-four oh one is gonna be-
It's gonna be-
The the commercial use, am I correct? Thirty-four-
The way they have it proposed now is that thirty-four oh one includes the the commercial piece on the corner-
Okay, that's all, that's good.
Right, and the little stem that goes outward.
Okay, then I I wouldn't change that. The way I'm looking at the lines, I thought thirty-four oh one was that little piece right there. But if it includes that back there, then I I totally understand where you're coming from now. But I I've gotta ask this question. Is there, do they rent out space on, i- is there other contractors there that's renting space? Is there any lease people there? That's also uses that's not permitted.
There are existing uses that were granted by the use variance that were existing.
Okay, there there was leasing out of property, leasing out space, contractors, that was part of the original?
There's, there are tenants in the, in the, in the office space on the first floor.
Okay, there's not supposed to be. If you go back through the original testimony, it's supposed to be a one tenant, one contractor place. That's what I'm saying. Each one of those uses is expanded non-conforming use. That, you know, whenever you get into that, you're gonna have to address that. At that time, I'm I'm just forewarning you, because, you know, thirty-four oh one, that that's not how the original resolution was written. And I, Mr. Tropoli wrote that resolution, and I can guarantee you, that's supposed to be one tenant, and it's supposed to be two apartments up top. None of that's supposed to be rented out.
We can, we can look at that again, but my recollection of that resolution is that there are more than one business in there, that at least, at least-
Well, it was, okay.
Okay.
Mr. Tropoli, let's let's get a date.
Yeah, let's, we'll address that at another time, Mr. Chairman, once the proofs are on the record as to what's there now. So anyway, getting back to the dates, we have November twenty-fifth.
Or December sixteenth, either one.
Or December sixteenth, and we'll need an extension of time to the end of the year.
And what dates were those?
November twenty-fifth or December sixteenth. We don't know yet which date.
Okay. When is Thanksgiving?
Uh, I'll tell you in a minute.
Twenty-eighth or twenty-ninth or something, yeah, something like that.
Twenty-eighth.
So December sixteenth would be, I think, the preferred date. Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay. That's December sixteenth, correct?
Yes.
Okay, case number BA fourteen oh seven A dash two, Tau Holdings LLC, Tau Holdings One LLC, will be carried to December sixteenth, seven thirty, with no further notice, and extension of time to the end of the year.
Is is this sufficient, or or would you like a letter?
Yeah.
This is sufficient. I mean, that's fine. It's on the record.
Great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, is there-
Thank you for your time. Appreciate you hearing us out, and we're we're working on it. We'll try and get you-
Thank you. We're we're not trying to be aggravating too, but there there's certain questions that we definitely need to know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, we have to pay the bills. Do I have a motion to-
Somebody up there still has it too, so I will leave it back there. Okay.
I'll make a motion to-
It disappeared.
Thank you.
Motion by Mr. Hughes, second by Mr. Seas.
Yes. Pay run.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, any further business of the board? Any further business? Eileen, any further business?
I have no other business.
Professionals, any further business? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn?
Motion, motion to adjourn by Mr. Seas, seconded by Mr. Rursko. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?